Singapore
Jandere, siya na sa'yo Ikaw Wala, ikaw na Umo ka na
What ranger am I?
I'm a tiger ranger
What ranger am I? Your other thing is you see your stomach's colors He's under the table
There, after the
I am a cat ranger
They're tiger ranger
If you're a tiger ranger, that means you're a girl
That means we can transform to a girl
That means you're a girl, because the tiger ranger is a girl
No, you're a girl Johan is a girl Johan is Because he's the tiger ranger, tiger ranger is a girl
Let's go Let's go
That means I'm a lion, because The lions have pink and yellow And the hair I just be tied with my hair And that means When I do this, I became a tiger
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be a leopard, because a leopard is Is a white
Okay, ano ito na ba dyan?
This is why
Wait guys, let's, let's do competition
Wait huh? Oh wait, I need to start from first
Ay, lang pa pala
I'm a leopard, I need to
Okay, then After
Uh, very short
Hey, it's a competition, I said!
Uh, very nice for the past 10 years Na pinakam
We start the game We start the game
And And we're gonna celebrate your Interventions Uh, major destiny and two
Go ready
Two major destiny So, yes
Ready
Kahit 'yung simulang-simulang pa it's okay Uh, as long as, you know
Stars is cheating
Good serving Are you all here?
Ain't no problem, that's cheating
Just like a place
Go to the pink slide On the red place
Okay, so siguro habang naghihintay sa kanila Ang ganda nong sinabi nila dito, how to be a star At this meeting, well Tell your cellphone bush Silent Silent, stay focused And always chat later So keep your eyes open, wide open Kasi baka daw mga tulungan And don't break the heart Smile and let's show the brighter Actually, kanina, kanina si Nisil Piyong Si Nisil Piyong reserve na room Sa kape dapet, siya naswamy pa 'yun Do you mind if I say a'kin? And napakafun, diba? The most fun ICPM ever Uh, huwag kayong mag-horridge Siya nakakapali mag-horridge Kasi siya long may aray dito Dung hotel dito Stockholder siya dito
No worries
So Anyway, officially welcome To ICPM 2019 Yes, finally Grabe, samantalang taon na Pero mas wala ka sa posisyon, mga chicken patroja na Ako na may microphone Anyways, um I'm just so blessed Doon siya niyawa ng ating Indonesian host Siguro, build your own, as you honor them Sa totoo lang po, uh, mahal nung package In that Bali, because ang tindi naman 'yung In siya masyado ang drab din Pero kasi Bali is a tourist, uh, area Kaya siya medyo maal Uh, naklalaro na rin siya, sa kasagian ng project ng 2019 35 pa So the rest, kasi 'yung 165 Your decision na ay sa hotel, accommodation, and food So I just imagine this, first time ever We're going ID with a schedule Color first purple Hindi po ako namili nga, huwag kayong masasabi Hala, ito po ang, ito ang color ng Indonesian Kasi ako nag So, ganun Uh, kinabukod na excellence And then, of course, this one, I don't know how much it is, no? 'Yung printing, pero this also first time ever So sabi ko nga, sa kanila, mahapon Uh, we're doing ICPM excellently, diba? For the past years Para pagin tayo patas ng taas Pero nung sila na nagpost para dito Parang midla tayo ng pressure for next year Maunang sabi, kung nakakapresure talaga So, 'yan tamin Cambodia Um, ano pa, the t-shirts and the bags Actually, 'yung bag, nagulat ako, pinatahingila 'yan It's not printed It's ano, pina I'm drawing nila 'yung tatak na Yun, yun, 'yung green na yun, nakatahi 'yan It's not stamped or printed Talagang binigay nila 'yung batih At tinino ko talaga, bumabusi ako eh Tinino ko talaga, double Double sided, 'yung ano, merong lining sa loob Ganun eh Ano 'yung kataliyo ng 'yung pressure niyo for next year Pero grabe, ay Ano nalang taw, tayda nalang taw, next year Chiang Mai, Mula, dyan So, sobrang kakabayan And alam namin na Ah, mati-umga dito, at sa kanila sa labas Sabi niya, oh, because we notice all Filipinos like selfie Sabi ko, yes, we're the selfie capital of the world So nagkatawas kami Ang tawag ng picture, and what a good Yung wala nang sa budget kami And ang sumututuon itong lahat ng itong extras IC, Jeffrey, and Anita Our, uh, our Indonesian family Itong mga tao nila, sila namin, the worship in the night At mga, hindi po nila 'yan church mates Actually, employees nila 'yan Okay? Employees nila, pero sa, sa business nila They call on their sons All their managers are sons and daughters Tapos your Asian manager, mga supervisors nila, disciples And 'yung mga hindi pa talaga nakakano kay Lord She, ang tawag nila So anyway, whenever you see the Indonesian Uh, delegates, or Jeffrey and Anita Please, please honor them and thank them Kasi it's, it's really excellently done And beyond our imagination, Chiang Mai Thank you, thank you So, I am here to thank you 'Yun talagang road ko Lalala ko, ay, ganun binasa ko 'yung part ng 'yan Ang ganda pa na nung sin
No worries
Pumbaba sa akin
No worries, tiger Leopard
So all my sons and daughters, within every season and every nation In my head I salute you and honor you I am so proud of you Thank you for responding to the call Together, we can make this mission possible, Arriana
Okay, now, you are a transformer
I really want to say thank you for each and everyone Um, 'yung pinakamatanda na church, Jeffrey, and Singapore Pastor Desra and G Dubai Si Kri, and then, then
That's how it was last, okay?
John is here Of course, um, Cambodia Vlad and And Barb's Vietnam Si Vlad and Amy New Jersey, Caroto, and Sutubi, Alabanga Si Grace, andito siya
Pretend you don't know where I am
Ano pa, totoo lang po Nagpirmahan namana tayo talaga, no? Hindi na kailangan ng papel Ano na na, Shinket, uh, Chiang Mai Thailand, and of course, Indonesian I'm really glad, paang Malaysia Because that's directly to our heart That's our birth So I'm really thankful for all the pioneers of Malaysia Anita, si Laura, si Ben Si Angelina Si Trami, Nia, si Barb's Uh, and nasaan pa si Ade And of course, si Grace
Yeah, just like that
Thank you so much Thank you for staying in his presence Thank you for pursuing his presence I have to tell you this, I have to Um, thank you for just staying in the presence of God You know, we cannot, we cannot do this
Pretend you don't know my name
Without God I mean, sino pa naman na magpapalagay ng churches in 100 nations Or in 1200 nations without God? It's so hard
I am red ghost And I am yellow
Adesa, sabi ko, kaya ko magpost na ako Huwag 'yung nakangana ako, ah So
I'm transformed to a lion
Grabe, I'm just so honored na Wherever we go, especially last Last thing, siya na nagisip namin 'yung Vietnam The presence of God is so Really tangible, nagpamadikas siya Nung wala siyang difference kahit sa Los Angeles ka, or nasa metro ka Or nasa Vietnam ka And now, we have the passion to worship God And we maintain that culture And culture na nako-posit talaga sa presence ni God I'm so thankful for everyone na Na I maintain that Hindi lang maintain it, pero you went deeper and deeper as you go to the nations My next thing is, thank you for staying with our pamilya Many are not here anymore, not with us anymore Pero I don't want to come, that they're lost Or no one else is here, no But we have our own family And thank you for remaining together Ako, I believe Uh, as long as they believe in the Lord, they're okay, right? Siguro, indeed, uh, this is their family of origin But they have their own family of destiny Kung saan talaga sila pwedeng gabi din i Lord And some of you, uh, iba 'yung family of origin nyo But you found us, your destiny Your destiny, family Diba? Oo, pero hindi 'yung akalain na 'Yung mga, uh, hindi naman nag-originin dito Sila pa 'yung mas powerful Kaya, thank you for staying with us Thank you for loving our own people Chiang Mai, our, and you Ano, ang ginamit kayo na recruit eh Sumama lang kayo, sumama Kitaan niyo kami sa Durian Ayon, so Anyway, ganun din kay Vlad and Tenny Napusapan pa namin dati, oh, magpa, magpa Ano, sum Sungilong muna kayo, matapos ang ulan, balik na kayo dun, ah Ewa ko Anyways, sobrang thankful to God for staying with us Thank you po nga 'yang katabi mo Thank you for staying with Of course, I haven't mentioned sila Ita Gladys, Ita Janelle They're from other churches, but they're here
Hey, where's my slippers now?
Si James, of Church Union
I don't know
Si Virge, dyan Odi pa, humahin ka But thank you, thank you, thank you Uh, next is, thank you for focusing on our purpose You know, sometimes Um, hindi madali 'yung process natin Sino mag-brings the heads? Hindi madali 'yung process Pero thank you for focusing on our purpose Kasi sometimes, pwede tayo maswahay away because of our process Ako, dumaan ako sa pati din 'yung process, just as Pero sometimes, 'yung process na 'yun, you cannot negate na Hindi siya importante, or waste of time, or Or sometimes, diba, we view it as, uh Nakakadelay Ako, na-review ko na ganun ang ba Parang na-waste ko 'yung one year ko because of that painful process But actually, in the long run, it's, it's needed So that you'll be made whole And you may be, you may be perfected in Christ, all the world So do not negate the pains of the process 'Yung iba sa iyo, nasa pains pa rin, diba? Iba sa iyo, nasa process pa rin, it's okay Ang, ang point ang chant is, there is always hope And God is with us Hindi kaya tayo papabayaan, even in our painful Time and season Yes? So thank you for that, thank you for believing in us So what's, what does the next 10 years look like? Kasi 10 years na tayo, 10 years na ba exactly ang Singapore? Ano kayo mag Nag-10 years na kayo? Oo, nag-10 years na, um, Dubai? 12 years na una pa kayo? Malaysia? So Mas more pa kayo Anyway, so what's the purpose for the next 10 years? Or what's our game plan? Um, first is, let's focus on prayer And the prophetic declaration that we have received Last pastor's workshop, last December, last year Uh, inano ni Pastor Virge, dahat na prophetic declaration ng bawat church In the Philippines, and of course, uh, your ICPM churches natin And what you have received as a prophetic declaration Truly, yun 'yung nangyari sa mga churches nila Truly, yun ang nangyari sa churches nila So really, really value Kung ano 'yung prophetic declarations sa atin, mga churches For the church, for the years to come Yeah, 'yung last year na, last year ba? Oh, this year, this year Yeah, last year na prophetic word 'yung January Let evaluation of December, and true enough Lahat ng prophetic declaration that was declared January Came to fulfillment of the evaluation of December Okay Plan for your next station Be led for enjoying at least
Oo, we need to go walk the hand
Ano, nasusunod 'yan na ba 'yung 10 disco? Plan And then, partners Mamaya magpa-pray tayo Partners in love life Ayaw naman nating, ano no, may mga churches tayo Singles forever, syempre gusto natin may mapapartner sila And of course, partners in ministry Kung, uh, si Pastor Holley and Pastor Yuni is from Hope Church ng Jorbaru And ano ito nun 'yung Hope Church nila from Jakarta They really wanted to partner with us And also, um, I am, matagal na nilang sinasabi, of marriage of ministry I think, ano na kami sa pointy ball na We cannot just do it alone We cannot do it alone We need 'yung together Together with other people, with other ministries That's our next, our plan for the next 10 years Is to partner with other ministries And Pray for provision Pray for provision Diba? Without the, without vision, the people perish Pray for provision for the ministries Ang, ang, isa sa mga naappreciate ko sa family Eh, ewa ko kung ito na nagyari sa family ninyo Kapag 'yung ate o 'yung kuya nakatapos na At nakapagtrabaho na, sila magsu-support ng pagaaral ng mga kapatid Tama ba? And it's my heart's prayer na 'Yung mga mas, mas able na, or na mga churches Na nakakapagtrabaho at medyo mas may kaya na They would be able to support 'yung mga churches na hindi pa Hindi pa sila nakakapag I love you, wife There are, there are areas na, hindi ko na kailangan isahisahin pa Pero, malaki kami nakahausalan ng mga neighbors na That they have to undergo so much Just because of finances Na sana, kung, kung wala tayong problem sa financial Sana malalaisan namin 'yung mga kailangan nilang pagtanong Like for example, mahigulay sila sa sao nila Mahigulay sila sa mga pagigay nila, just for money sake Kasi hindi natin, as ministry, hindi natin sila paprovide na Ang ila, ang ila Ayon, masamahirap I was, I was Asking the Kung ano talaga 'yung pinaka-word ko for the process na pinagdagan ko And the one word na nalearn ko through that process last year, is commitment The word is commitment I'm really for commitment Um, sabi ko, sabi nga ni Holley, man, hindi naman 'yung sa'yo eh, sa akin But eh, sige, sa'yo na lang Parang, parang kasi Paul, grabe siya magcommit To the point na he could miss birthday, he could miss anniversary He could miss a lot of things Ganito, hindi ko sinasabing sundan niya siya, what? No, no, no Dun sa, I need inner healing because of his commitment But ito is all that, nakita ko 'yun Nakita ko 'yun sa sarili ko, grabe ako magcommit Grabe talaga pa na kami magcommit To the point that it really hurts when we commit Ayaw ko, hindi ako nagde-cap, kaya I was hurt, I was in pain For people who doesn't follow Yun pala 'yung malaki sa akin Thank you for committing to the nations Kasi hindi naman namin kayang pumunta sa lahat ng nation para kami ang bumuo niyo Pero I salute hearts for For your commitment Alam ko, iba sa inyo for life, iba sa inyo for something Nevertheless I'm so proud of you So, hindi yun ang topic ko 'Yung pay ko doon, ay pera padala Provincio, pera padala I was Um, I was openly rebuked by Pastor Virge last time Sabi ko, uh Kasi ayaw ko humihingi ng budget, ayaw ko humihingi ng budget Kasi, ah, makawala pera ng ministry, walang pera ng ministry And then sabi niya, ang kakaprich ko lang ng poverty Breaking the poverty mindset Nasab niya, eh diba ma'am, si poverty din yun, if you have fear Sabi ko, oo, ano Sa kabilang side niyang poverty mindset, if you fear So, 'yung tuong process ko doon It's just because of commitment Dahil ayaw magcommit ng mga tao Not just in their code, but also in the finances side If only people who has Kaya ako sobrang, sobrang na-o-honor, or nag-atatch deeply Nila Jeffrey and Anita Because they're not even part of destiny Pero they've committed for the ICPM Nawala naman sila part alaga dito Hindi pa ba sila nag-ICPM eh? Pero their commitment to us, as special parent Grabe Hindi ko, hindi ko talaga ma-explain We've met a pastor na magpe-prich doon si Virge sa July 2 Doon Pastor Hey Ricky and Honey, you know Ricky and Honey Doon sila last year, so call them up, or they're Indonesians Uh, special daughter and son sila ni Jeffrey and Anita Pumunta kami sa church nila, lamit namin 'yung pastor nila 'Yung pastor nila is actually a businessman And sinabi sa kanya ni Lord Mag-build ka ng church, because ang business niya ay construction Tas sabi sa kanya ni Lord, you built my church Sabi niya, Lord, yun ang pinaka-ayaw mong i-build na building, 'yung church Kasi ang dami 'yung requirement, walang pera Totoo yun Tapos ang hilang kausap, ang dami nilang gustong, pero wala Parang, parang ICPM Ang dami natin gustong, pag hinihinay ang budget, wala tayong budget Anyways, talagang sinabi sa kanya ni Lord Build my church So, and dun, kung nakita niyo 'yung ulo at Bird doon na malaki Pinutalo 'Yung bird dito sa Indonesia, na blue, na malaki Tapos sa statue dyan sa, sa Bali May isang land dyan na pinili 'yung pastor, pinabili sa kanya ni Lord Na one, ano, dapat mga 2 million yun Tinawaran nga, na 1 million dala 3.5 hectares Tapos sabi niya, can I just pay you, ano, parang Stop her payment, who mind 'yung may are Pero wala siyang pera, wala siyang payment Sinabi na ni Lord, going home So anyway, inawa niya, 'yung 1 hectare binenta niya at 1 million Na beta niya So yun, pinayat doon sa may are For the 3.5, uh, 3.5 hectares Tapos, 'yung 3.5 hectares Binenta niya at 3 billion So yun ang pinanawan niya ng church Dapat doon ang ICPM natin, pero anniversary kasi 3,000, uh, 3 million US dollars Hindi, hindi hindi rumiya No, 3 million US dollars And he built it excellently Kung makikita niyo 'yung marble ng floor, thick wood ang doors Tapos ang acoustic Uh, panels na, napangagandang Tas sabi niya, hindi ako lumigi sa members ng NE Single sa town Kasi naprovide lahat ng binetang lupa Tas sabi ko, Lord, bakit hindi namin alam 'yung single sa town eh? Tapos, anyway When he started building, the people saw That he's building the church And so the people gave Bakit ko sinasabi na sa inyo? I hope you'll see what's in our hearts for 100 nations And as, as I consider you the older brothers or the older churches Let's give birth to the next nations, to the next baby nations Uh, tinecap na nila, Pastor Joseph and Grace Uh, ang baby church natin sa Alabanga They're really supportive, supportive of it Even their church paid for the airfare Hindi po madali ang airfare sa US Paid for the airfare of Pastor Joseph and behind Crossover Kasi wala namang funds pa ang Alabanga Yes, sabi niyo US yun, but no, hindi ganun kadali Pero I really love seeing that If there's one thing That I really, kanina nung kinakausap ko si Lord I really want a generous church Like a destiny generous church And Lord, yun lang 'yung message ko, or yun lang, okay na And lastly, perfect love casts away all fears I just want you, and ipapalalas na, or ipapalato Tama ba, tignan mo
Number 9
Ah, do you want? Okay, staying in the presence of God, preserving his presence Stay together as pamilya Purpose Then prayer Plan for the next station, partners Pera padala Perfect love
Okay, next round
Number 8? Okay, sige, makahon din siya ng nagalap Perfect love casts away all fears This is my confidence, as we serve the nations Do not fear for your families That's tested in our family Believe for the bo, ang father namin Believe for your mother namin Of course, si DJ, si Prashin na lang But what I'm saying is Do not fear, the Lord will take you out, your family Your family is back home, nasaan na sila Do not fear about your career Kung alam mo, alam at kaalam mo na you are called to the future Don't fear about your career Kung mag-close 'yan, ay nakuibig sabihin, the Lord will open another door Do not fear, do not fear Uh, and do not fear about your ministry It's not yours, anyway It's not yours Chiang Mai, it's pati dito It's not yours It's God's ministry Or kung ano pa manang, ano pa manang, 'yung may morning life Love and fear cannot go together Hindi sila 'yung, 'yung holding hands, hindi pwede yun Isa, laki 'yung space dun sa heart ko Love and fear na, hindi pwedeng sitin together sila Sa, sa life ko It's either you operate in love, or you operate in fear When you wake up in the morning Ah, mag-tracking week na ako Oo ba, ganun, diba? Or, no, buhay pa ako, praise the Lord It's a new day, baka ayun ko na mamimit 'yung perfect one O diba? Dapat maganda ka, pagpasok mo sa office Para at least ko madapaan at nagpumulot sa'yo ay siya. Maganda pa rin na lipstick ko, at tara na ang kilay mo. And lastly, peace. Personally. Uh, sabi nga natin, yes, 10 years, or 13 years, or 15 years. May, may ngalit kasi ako kwento na sabi niya, "Ah, nasa ministry na ako, pagod na pagod na ako, gusto ko naman ng salili buhay ko, aking na may nunan." O di, sige, bakit tayo ba 'yung buhay mo? Wala naman kumake, diba? Ang point of the list, I want to find myself. Bakit no, wala 'yung self mo? I mean, we have a lot of reasons sa life natin, diba? But I, I would like to encourage you, be led for peace, my God's peace, wherever you are, whatever season you are in, wherever you go. When the next season of, it's alright, be led for you peace. Kung wala ka pa rin boyfriend, it's alright, be led for you peace. Kung wala kang one, it's alright, be led for you peace. Yeah. Isaiah 26, uh, si Jeffrey, my verse. Exhortation lang to ano sa'yo. Isaiah 26, verse 3 to 4. "You will keep him in perfect peace whose might is stayed on you because he trusts in you." Shazam the Lord forever, for in Yahweh, the Lord is everlasting strength. Now, we will pray for the nations. Paginawa ko 'yung nation nyo, I want you to stand up. Tapos, everyone will pray for you, okay ba? So paginawa ko 'yung nation nyo, uh, we will all direct our hands on them and release peace, shalom, release blessing. And specifically, kung wala pa sila mga asawa, release! I-release nila sila. Diba? So, the first one for Malaysia. Thank you Malaysia for being our firstborn. Please stand up. And all the pioneers of Malaysia. Ayan, ando si Barb's, ah, huwag 'yung kalimutan si Barb. Barb's, Jen, me, Tram, Brian, and Anthony. Let's all pray for them. Father, thank you for Malaysia, thank you for our firstborn. Thank you for, you are so faithful in those years that we were planting Malaysia and giving birth to the nations. They might say na, "Lord, it, uh, wala na close na or, um, Lord, it's really..." I don't know kung ano nangyayari sa kanila, but Lord, you are a faithful God, destiny Malaysia. And so we honor these people, we honor these pioneers together with Grace and Alve and Mary, Lord, and precious. Lord, we just, siya na ten, Lord, we just pray and release blessing over them. Just pray for them right now. Release blessing, specific blessing. Lord, wise, ay fan, atka ay brother, Lord. Amen! Lord, see, at the Lord, see. Lord, in Jesus' name, in Jesus' name, bless them, in Jesus' name. Open their eyes so they may see her. And everyone say, "Amen, amen." We pray for Destiny Singapore or Antioch. And also the pioneers of Singapore, si Odessa. Odessa? Odessa! Talaga mo, nakalimutan kita, and then, okay, sa'yo Singapore. Rose, ayon, nakanta si Rose. Natan, bakit ka na hobo? Michelle, the pioneer is nine. Natan, Michelle, and all the kids, come on. Si Ochi. Bakit ka na hobo? Okay, let's declare, Destiny has our Antioch church. Father, we just release more favor, open door, so God, Lord, release blessing. Yes, just pray specifically for them. Husband, Lord, kay Odessa. Kay Rose. Ay lalo na kay Lorraine, oh! Lord, yes, we honor them, we honor them for their hearts, for their fruits, oh God, we honor them for their perseverance, oh God. Thank you for their lives, thank you for their sacrifices, oh God. Thank you for, Lord, just be with them throughout these years, Lord. We honor them, we honor them with love. Yes, blessing, so God, in Jesus' name. Thank you, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen, amen. Tapos, paginakwento, specific na tao. Ayon na nga, Odessa, Lord, si ganyan, kay Odessa, ganun, hindi ko alam eh. Isaka na sabi ko, manon, diba? Oo, pwede na doon, diba? Destiny Dubai! For our being, for Destiny Dubai, for leading the streams in the desert.
Let's just extend our hands to these powerful women. And in joining all those steed from Dubai, that God will shower them with husbands and wives. Eh, kasi namin walang asawa. Lord, lend unto heaven, release men! For our women, for Destiny Dubai, Lord! In Jesus' name.